Good afternoon. Welcome to the Board of County Commissioners Workshop on September 14th at 1:30 PM. And welcome, everyone. And we will start the meeting by doing a roll call. We don't, we will not be taking votes during this time period, but I want to make sure everybody knows who's present.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Olbermann?
Here.
Cohen?
Here.
Hagan?
Here.
Kemp? Commissioner Kemp? Myers?
Here.
Smith?
Here.
White? Commissioner White? Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you very much. I appreciate that. I'm calling the meeting to order if we would like to move to the very first agenda item.
Sure. Good afternoon, Commissioners. We have seven items on the workshop agenda for today, with the last item actually continuing after the agenda was published. And there will be no action required at this time for these items going forth today. So the first item will have 2206, Carla Yanos.
Good afternoon. Let me share my screen real quick. Please confirm you can see my screen?
Yes, we can.
Yes, we can. And we also, I do see that Commissioner Kemp and Commissioner Smith have both joined us. The record.
Noted. Thank you.
Good afternoon. Carla Yanos with the Comprehensive Plan Review Team. This is a privately initiated small-scale comprehensive plan amendment, 22-06 Williams Road and Sly Avenue. It's in the unincorporated Hillsborough County. This plan amendment is located in the middle of the July 2022 cycle in the Thonotasasa community. The property is located at 7100 Williams Road. In Sefner, it's east of Interstate 75 and Williams Road. It's north of Interstate 4, Circle South Road, and Sly Avenue East. The subject property is currently vacant. We did an early site visit back in March of this year, and it did show some construction materials onsite and some equipment. But we have not been out to the property since, so we cannot know for certain what's on there right now. What we did note was that the property is located in a rural area, and it's mostly with residential and agricultural predominant uses. There are two schools in proximity to the property. One is a public school, the other one's a private school. There are also two churches, a cemetery nearby, and the Tampa Executive Airport is located to the west on the other side of Interstate 75. And that is approximately 3,500 linear feet away. There's more intense areas found along County Road 579. There is like a wastewater treatment facility, manufacturing warehouse, distribution, dealer, retail, et cetera. And that area is located approximately 4,500 linear feet away. The project is approximately 10 acres in the rural service area in the Thonotasasa community plan, as previously mentioned. This plan amendment was originally part of the January cycle. However, the applicant since then has revised their request twice, and is now part of that July cycle. The applicant is currently requesting a comprehensive plan amendment from Residential 1 Futur land use category to a Residential 2. So the property has the adopted future land use of Residential 1, and this typically allows farms, ranches, residential uses, rural scale, neighborhood commercial uses, offices, and some multipurpose projects. Now, now, the commercial component is subject to meet locational criteria for certain land use projects. And the proposed is going to Residential 2, and that allows residential suburban-scale neighborhood commercial office uses, again, multipurpose projects. Now, the subject property is surrounded by a C Residential 1 Futur land use category. Residential 4 can be found to the northwest of the property, and it's approximately 4,000 linear feet away. And the community mixed use 12, and the suburban mixed use 6 is found to the southeast, and there's no Residential 2 nearby that property. So again, subject property is in the Residential 1 Futur land use category. This has a standard density of one dwelling unit to the acre and a 0.25 FAR. This will allow the property to have at least 10 dwelling units or 109,000 square feet of non-residential. Now, the applicant is proposing Residential 2, and this is going to allow up to two dwelling units an acre and a floor area ratio of 0.25. You can see that the floor area ratio does not change. It stays the same. The density does increase slightly, so under the proposal, it would allow them to have at least 20 dwelling units on the property. So on this slide, I've listed the applicable on public hearing dates. In the meantime, we will be continuing to review the application and any newly submitted information, as well as the agency comments that we're still receiving. And you'll have a full staff report before the public hearing. And I'll be glad to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that presentation. I do see two Commissioners that have questions. One, Commissioner White, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Actually, that was just to let you know that I'm here. I was a little late logging in due to some technical difficulties.
Understood, understood. Thank you for letting us know. Commissioner Kemp, you're recognized.
Okay, just a couple of things. And to be clear, this is in the rural service area, correct? The other thing you said, it's all surrounded by Res 1, which is what it is right now. But for, did you say 4,000 feet to the northeast?
For which category? We have Residential 4. Can you see my mouse by any chance?
No, I don't see. You mean that little, the Res 4 is, I can see the kind of peach color there to the...
Yes. So you have the northeast portion, that's going to be Residential 4, and that's 4,000 linear feet away. And then down to the southeast portion, that's CMU 12 and CMU, SMU 6. So that's kind of more intense categories, and that's again over 4,500 feet away as well.
Right. And the 4,000 feet, when you say that, that, so that's, I mean, amount, miles, 5,200 feet. It might be better to frame it in over three quarters of a mile away or something like that. I'm just, since the foot doesn't mean that much in terms of, you know, how we can measure it in that, when it comes to those numbers. That's all.
Understood.
Thank you.
Okay, I'm not seeing any other hand raised, so I'm, Commissioner Smith, you're recognized. Yes, and I was opposed to this when it came forward as a Res 4, and I just want to go on record. Maybe it will help the applicant to understand that I would also be opposed to the Res 2, one little enclave of increased density in the rural area like this. Thank you. Okay, great. I'm not seeing any other hands raised. Ms. Linoz, thank you very much for your presentation.
You're welcome.
Our next item is HCCPA 2207, land, future text, land use text amendment.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Unika Mills, Planning Commission staff. I am here to present HCCPA 2207. At the direction of the Board of County Commissioners, Planning Commission staff, county staff, as well as the owner of Pine Key Island, were directed to collaborate on creating a new future land use category. So staff is initiating this text amendment to establish a new future land use category, island recreation. This category will be used to designate any privately owned island, including Pine Key Island, with a suitable future land use classification that would fit the intended uses and unique characteristics of the site. This new future land use classification will be placed within the future land use element within Appendix A. And within that Appendix A, it has several different components. The first component is the residential growth density. As far as residential uses go, no residential uses will be permitted with the exception of a caretaker's residence with this new future land use category. The typical uses that can be considered on the site include outdoor passive recreation, open space, public beach and water access, limited special events, temporary vendors, and enclosed storage related to the upkeep of the island. As for maximum floor area ratio or square feet, a .025 floor area ratio or up to 20,000 square feet of non-residential uses can be considered with a building scale complementary and not detrimental to the environmental nature of the site can be considered. The specific intent of the island recreation future land use category is to designate islands that will allow limited development of recreational uses that are not detrimental to the environmental features of the site. Additionally, such essential uses as restrooms, picnic areas can be considered. At the rezoning stage, a plan development or site plan-controlled zoning district will be required. This future land use category is not intended to designate islands that are acquired through the Environmental Lands and Acquisition Program or any state or federal or nonprofit agency. Additionally, it is not the intent of Hillsborough County to provide islands with public services or infrastructure such as sewer, potable water, or fire services. We did receive some comments thus far from EPC, which expressed development for recreational uses on the site has the potential to cause environmental impacts. It is my understanding, though, that at the time of development, any proposal would be reviewed by EPC, and the site would need to meet regulations at that time. Additionally, EPC did suggest a minor revision to the verbiage under the specific intent, and will continue to work with EPC staff on that revision. This concludes my presentation. I'm available for any questions that you may have. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Commissioner Smith, you're recognized. So this is a, this is a significant category, new category that could apply, could be applied to all, any islands, aside from ones that we acquire through EPC or ELAP in the Bay. It may seem, or rivers. I mean, it may seem like, oh, there's not that many places this could apply. But in fact, I mean, Mosaic owns some islands. There are privately owned islands I know of in the mouth of the Little Manatee River. There are, some have not only environmental features, but the Indian mounds and historical types of assets. So I, you know, I, I just think we should tread really carefully about what the ramifications and precedent should be. And, and since it's a different kind of a comp plan amendment than we're usually considering, we're usually considering something like the last one. Should it be Res 2 or Res 4 in this area of Res 1? But here, we're really talking about what can be done with islands in Tampa Bay, maybe years from now, not just this island. And, and so I think it's important that we make sure that everybody is, is informed about this who may have some perspective and information to bear on this. For example, the Florida Audubon Society has for decades and decades patrolled the islands in Tampa Bay, which are, many of them, critical nesting areas. And I mean, when I say critical nesting areas, I mean, there are species of birds that, whose, whose existence depends on the habitat that is provided on these islands. And how we manage them is, is really important for the survival of several different kinds of birds. For, there are nesting birds that Audubon goes out and patrols for during nesting season that, that nest in, right on the sand of these beaches of the islands in Tampa Bay. And, and if you, and they just lay a couple of tiny eggs, the size of a marble, on top of the little rubble of shells and sand on these beaches. And, and you do not see them because they are speckly and sand-colored. And so the, the little parent birds, who are very small as well, are sitting on top of them until maybe a dog runs up or boaters come and picnic near them. And then the parents leave that nest, leave those eggs, and it, it's a matter of minutes before they're cooked in the sun. So, I mean, there's, there's wildlife habitat ramifications that need to be considered carefully. That's just one example. And I, I just think we need to make sure that all the entities who have been for decades invested in protecting the island habitats are involved, informed, and given the opportunity to participate in reviewing this comp plan amendment. So Audubon, Tampa Bay Estuary Program, the Agency on Bay Management, Sierra Club are off the top of my head, as well as ELAP and EPC. And, and when EPC says that, okay, they've got some environmental concerns, and then, you know, you, Ms. Mills, says something like, but of course, they would be involved in reviewing any zoning that comes after this. I think because of the categorical nature of this and the, you know, the, the different kind of thing that this is, that, that we should be extra careful with that typical process as well because once we've said, okay, we, we can have development on these islands in the Bay in our comp plan, and we'll just worry about what kind of development when the zoning comes in later, and then we'll have EPC take a look at, at it and regulate it. Well, you know, we've already, we've already signaled, we've already taken steps towards that development, and now we're just asking EPC to, you know, say, well, you can put it over here, but not over there. Or, you know, you can't move these mangroves, but, or if you do, you have to mitigate for them. Now, EPC is in a different position of trying to get to yes, you know? Trying to see where the, you know, how this could be developed that would not impact the environment, as opposed to in the comp plan, having kind of this, this line already crossed. So, so those are the things I'm thinking about here at this stage of the, of the, you know, workshop. And just putting that out there that this is a very unusual kind of comp plan amendment that is making dramatic, big changes in how we will look at these islands in the Bay and the habitat that they provide. And, and frankly, the, the natural furniture that they provide to Tampa Bay. And, and, and so, you know, saying, well, on this island, we could do this, but on this island, we can't do this, is, is taking a very big step that I'm going to be very cautious about. Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner Smith. I agree that it's maybe having a thorough list to consult so that those can be notified, I think is obviously something that needs to be considered in this circumstance. And I couldn't begin to tell you all the different organizations that, you know, that do work in this area that you're referencing. So I think it would be, all of us could probably come up with a few names that we would like to throw out there so that at least they're notified and able to participate in the public process as we consider things like this. Thank you very much. I don't see any other hands raised. Thank you very much. Ms. Mills, your presentation, and we can move on to the next item.
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. Can you hear me and see the screen?
Yes, we can. Thank you.
Great. Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. Diego Guerra, Planning Commission staff. This is briefing on Hillsborough County's Comprehensive Plan Amendment 22-Tech 12, the capital improvement section update to the unincorporated Hillsborough County Comprehensive Plan. The capital improvement section is part of the final phase of the comprehensive plan update and part of the governance, governance chapter of the comprehensive plan update as depicted on the graphic to the right. The current context of the element includes language on levels of service, financial feasibility, needed public facilities and improvements, coordinating capital, improvements with land development, coastal hazard area, inform public and capital improvement planning, schools, and support to transportation improvements. This slide provides the proposed updated goal and associated objectives to the new section update. The objectives, the objective topics in bold are areas of substantive revision. Now, I'll discuss objectives 1 and 2 further in the next few slides. The language associated with objective 5 became, became effective into the current element with the adoption of the coastal management section. However, we have made some further refinements to that language. Additionally, we are also proposing new language to, new language specific to the equitable distribution of capital improvements, distribution. And we also worked with, on the update, collaboratively, collaboratively with county staff who assisted in the review and refinement of the language in, also ensured that previous 9J5 requirements and regulatory language currently found in the element were properly addressed. One of the substantive changes to the objectives relates to level of service. Currently adopted in the language, currently adopted language in the element discusses three categories of levels of service, which are A, B, and C. The new terms move from this terminology to a more direct and more easily understood terminology. The proposed terminology of adopted levels of service currently addressed in the element as category A facilities are public facilities that must be maintained and meet concurrency. We did work with county staff to update these levels of service. For example, for stormwater levels of service, we worked with county staff to add target flood levels of service. For portable water, pressure within transmission lines was added within the language. Solid waste was updated with the solid waste section update that occurred in May and became effective in May. For parks and recreation, we updated the levels of service to be consistent with the recently completed impact fee study as well. The proposed terminology of target levels of service currently addressed in the element as category B facilities are for planning purposes only and focus on mobility and discusses county roads, flooding, multiple, multi-modal language and maps, which I will discuss a little bit further in the next slide. Additionally, these levels of service are not regulatory and, as I mentioned, are used for planning purposes. Excuse me. The proposed terminology for public schools levels of service, which is currently adopted as category C levels of service, there's no change to the proposed, there's no change to the currently adopted language or the levels of service other than just the terminology of public schools levels of service. Ladies and gentlemen, for mobility-related languages I discussed, we're moving from that category B terminology to the target levels of service. There is no change to the intent with mobility policies and targets intended for the planning purposes to assist staff in identifying problem areas. We did work with TPO, who also worked with county staff to propose the addition of multimodal levels of ser, multimodal levels of service target measures and policy and, and in non-adaptive maps, which illustrate the following conditions. For vehicular levels of service, those are currently, currently exist within the element, and they've just been updated with the proposed update. For transit levels of service, those were updated and adopted with the mobility section, which became effective in May as well. So bicycle levels of service and pedestrian levels of service are new levels of service that will be discussed within this section update. Multimodal levels of service allows county staff to look at the existing conditions and plan for future improvements for mobility options. The level of service refers to ratings based on speed, convenience, and safety of the road for various users. The update of the mobility-related language in the element also includes some minor name acronym and flow and grammar change updates. And then finally, ladies and gentlemen, I also wanted to add that the TPO and county staff are in the final stages of developing travel time reliability measures, which if completed prior to early November, will be part of this amendment, that, that will be part of this amendment. If the measures are completed after early November, they will be brought forward as a separate amendment to this section at a later date. And ladies and gentlemen, this slide just depicts the plan amendment timeline. We did hold a virtual public outreach event in early August. We had our Planning Commission briefing a couple days ago. Our public comment period closes on October 1st with the Planning Commission public hearing to be held in November, the BOCC transmittal hearing currently scheduled for December. And if the board does transmit this amendment, we can expect adoption by sometime in early, early 2023. Ladies and gentlemen, like other updates to the, to the comprehensive plan of sections and chapters, there is a project page available for public view. The, like all the previous project pages, the, this project page does include the non-adaptive maps, the draft language, the ability to view the currently proposed and adopted language for comparison. And the exist, and the project page is available at the link found on the slide, but we've also included a QR code also available on the lower right. And as I mentioned, public comment does run through one October. Ladies and gentlemen, this concludes my presentation. On the screen are points of contact from the Planning Commission for the update. Myself, TPO staff, and county staff are available for any questions that you may have regarding the update.
Thank you very much for your presentation. That was excellent. I have a question, but I see that Commissioner Smith, you're recognized. Thank you. One of the problems I had with the earlier version of this was it's, it was maintaining a two-tiered level for water pressure with a higher level of service in the north of the county and a lower level of service standard for the south, where we've had water pressure problems. Now, this is, this is a 90
Now, this is, this is a ninety-eight page amendment, so I've done the best I can in, in making searches and pouring through this. But can you just tell me, because it looks to me like the only pressure that is, well, so two questions. Is, is pressure stipulated or specified only for fire flow? Or is, is there some level of service that we are putting in our comp plan as a goal for residential?
Yes, ma'am. Mr. John McCary is available to discuss that question in further detail. If he wants to.
Sure. I am here. Hopefully, yep, there we go. Yeah, everybody can hear me. I'll make sure I start there before I start going.
Yes.
We can hear you fine. We can see you.
Excellent. Thank you. Yes. So the short answer to that is we, historically in the comp plan, there has not been a level of service for pressure outside of a reference to fire flow. And the fire flow standard comes back to a minimum regulatory compliance number that you need to maintain twenty PSI in under all, basically all conditions. So one of the things we clarified this, in this, in the language was we specifically said, even though it wasn't in there before, twenty PSI during fire flow. There was references to maintaining fire flow and the twenty PSI was, say, a bit more buried down in our technical standards. The addition of the forty PSI minimum is outside of that fire flow condition is a, is a minimum level of service for normal operating conditions. That applies to both South Central System, Northwest System, and really any other smaller systems that, that we operate. So I think that's the, hopefully that answered your question, Commissioner Smith.
No, I'm sorry. I don't understand what the four, so in layman's terms, then the twenty PSI is the minimum that is needed for fire hoses across the county, right? But what's the forty PSI for?
So the, the twenty PSI is a reference to fire flow conditions, as in during, in the event of a fire flow, you have to design a system to meet that minimum standard. The forty, the forty is not considering that is, in addition to that, under normal operating conditions, you must have forty, not considering the fire flow, you have to maintain twenty. So it's, it's a both.
Yeah, but if, if you had forty PSI coming into my house, it would blow the showerhead off, wouldn't it?
It should not.
Okay, all right. Yeah, okay, I got a little, so forty PSI is what the residential service would be, would be getting to their house?
It would be a minimum standard for not just residential, but everywhere in our system.
Commercial as well as residential.
At the tap, correct, into our, at the tap from our system to their residence or their business.
Okay, and this standard in the comp plan is like, would apply to us. But it, you know, and to the, you know, the service that people should be able to expect in our county. And so, so then by extrapolation or something, it would also apply to our planning and development decisions that we wouldn't ever want to get ahead of ourselves in a, and get in a place like we are now where we're not able to provide that pressure, right?
Absolutely correct. So one of the things that we would review at the time of developer submittals is there would be a requirement, historically that requirement has been they need to demonstrate to us they can meet fire flow while maintaining twenty PSI. Now, in addition to that, they must demonstrate outside of those fire flow conditions, they can meet a minimum of forty PSI.
Perfect. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, I don't see any other hands, but I did have a question. On the slide where we were talking about minimum, minimum level of service, I forgot, it's like three slides in. Because this actually addresses capital improvement and how we grow. I'm curious about the balance between the mobility's section, the minimum level for, for mobility. Does that specifically set a minimum road standard that includes a higher level of service of what we've done in the past when it comes to the, the, the network in the area of, of mobility? Whether that be roads or sidewalks or trails or cycles or, you know, it makes mention in that slide multiple way, multiple modes of mobility. But I'm, I'm trying to get a better understanding of what that, how that language will get, will set it. So the MMLOS. That's, that was the term I was looking for. I did not write down, my apologies. But, you know, clearly at, at the top, we're defining what that looks like, transit, cycle, pedestrian and vehicular. And then it gives us the opportunity to look at existing conditions and plan for future improvements so that we can include that either on our capital budgets or capital investments in our tip, you know, for planning for, for transportation investments. But given that we have such a high level of pedestrian and cyclist crashes and injuries and deaths, the item where it talks about ratings based on speed, convenience, safety of, of the road for various users got my attention. We have, you know, continued to hear from residents that say, well, you decided to put this over here, but now, you know, there's no way to connect to it because the road structure is not sufficient or the level of service is not does not address anything other than the way cars get around. You know, the number of cars that come trip capture, for example. So in this mobility related service measure, that it doesn't fully explore how we would go about capitalizing the need for that level of service? Should it not be made available or even available at the moment?
Yes, ma'am. So overall, within the section and currently adopted, there are a priorities in regards to capital improvements. So for example, there, the priority, there's language that discusses that priorities for capital improvements must address deficiency, capital improvement re- replacement or for future growth. So the various departments within, within the county look at those priorities and essentially address their projects with, based on those priorities outlined within the capital improvements element. How? Does that answer your question in terms of?
It, it does to a certain extent. The question I have is the, is the issue associated with quote unquote county standard of roads, you know, if it's substandard, that what that means, whether it's within the county standard that may have been established many years ago that actually has, you know, two-lane roads and a soft shoulder and a ditch rather than a two-lane road with an edge, you know, a wide enough edge for water flow, water transfer to go through, but also possibly a bike lane or possibly a sidewalk and/or a hard shoulder that's hard enough that would allow for speed to not be the deciding factor on survival of someone walking along the side of the road. And that's, that's kind of what we've left a lot of our residents up, you know, to, to deal with because the standard had, did not require hard shoulders or did not require sidewalks, and that is the existing situation. So the level of service needs to take and to, you know, balance out the decision-making when it comes to car-centric level of service measures as well as, you know, other modalities. And that's why I was trying to get my arm around what, how that's balanced out.
Okay, I mean, are, are able to address the language and how the language touches on those topics. And I know that we did invite county staff as well that can address some of those more technical aspects of your question and how the county decides what type of struck road or, like you said, the edges and how those are implemented within their department and how they implement.
Yeah, I mean, I realize we have different count classifications of various different types of roads, your collector roads, your artilleryal's and your, but your neighborhood. But it, it does, you know, when we start to balance out the prioritization of roads and the service to a community and where majority of the, the goal has been literally getting cars through rather than other methods of mobility. Finding a way to actually identify that so that we don't forget or that we require a certain amount of safety because we, we, we really do need to elevate that. So that, that was why I was asking, because that's in a lot of our rural areas that are growing, those, the current infrastructure is highly inadequate trying to measure that balance or that level of service.
Yes, yes, ma'am. We do have Ms. Katrina Cochran online that may, that should be able to answer that question.
Yeah, I see her pop on.
I believe that I can. Yes, ma'am.
Serena.
Hi. Good afternoon, Commissioners Katrina Cochran and Planning Commission Staff. I just wanted to jump in, Commissioner Overman, with your, your comments here and mention that I typically in the comprehensive planning and the capital improvements element, it has only looked at vehicular level of service. And we've added this pedestrian LOS and the bicycle LOS to really get, get to what you're talking about with addressing those other multimodal options. Again, as Diego mentioned, these are non-regulatory. However, the maps that we've proposed show the existing conditions and can help focus, you know, where priorities should be in terms of bicycle pedestrian, pedestrian infrastructure. So those are new measures and I think will help add that multimodal aspect to looking at our roadways. And I, I hope that helps to address your questions. Thank you.
It does. Thank you very much. Commissioner Kemp, you're recognized. Thank you.
Thank you. I just thought those were really good points and it's good to, Commissioner Overman, it's good to understand the, that the, these new measures, level of service of bicycle and pedestrian are new and added in. That's a good thing, although you do say that they're not regulatory, which I totally understand because all this stuff is generated apparently federally. And I mean, I think some of the standards that have been there forever are a little bit shocking when you start to understand and know what they are. I wondered, it just, you know, even before, as I was looking at this list, if there could be anything like a level of safety, level of service, level of safety that, that we look at for roads besides a level of service for bicycles and pedestrians. I'll just throw that out there, but I, I, I really like to start thinking about that. That isn't something I, I guess, you know, I'm not sure exactly how that you would come into it, certainly. Probably not before you create a road, but I think it would be a, a great standard to be starting to think about.
Excellent. Thank you very much. Are there any other comments before we move on to the next item? Thank you both, Katrina and for that presentation. That was very helpful. And with that, we will move on to the next item.
Good afternoon, Commissioners Wade Reynolds, Plan Hillsborough. One second, I'm just trying to share my screen. I hope you all are able to see that. Good afternoon, Wade Reynolds, Plan Hillsborough. I am here to present a comprehensive plan text amendment, HCCPA twenty-two dash fourteen. This is an amendment to the corridor preservation plan, which is map one of the mobility elements. We are classifying this as a text amendment because, to keep it separated from our future land use map amendments. The proposed changes, this is a privately initiated amendment to remove a portion of Lisi Road extension from the corridor preservation map, which is mobility element map one. In the bottom of the map, you can see here, just south of Apollo Beach, the red square is the general area. This is a zoomed in map of that. Paseo Almar, Apollo Beach Boulevard is to the north, the blue line. US forty-one is to the west, the orange line there, I seventy-five to the east. And that is nineteenth Avenue, south of this proposal. The existing Lisi Road is shown at the left here, west of US forty-one. Then there is a, a space and then the CSX tracks and then Lisi Road proposed for removal is the red line to the right of, or to the east of the CSX tracks there. A little bit of background on this, the corridor preservation plan is designed to preserve rights of way and accommodate future growth. The map does not require the construction of any roadways, but sets specific right of way widths to be preserved as adjacent land develops. The water set DRI currently requires construction of a two-lane roadway at this location. The applicant's justification for the request is that a twenty thirteen agreement between Hillsborough County and CSX requires Lisi Road to be grade separated.
No.
Requires Lisi Road to be grade separated from the CSX tracks, so they will have to build an overpass based on that agreement. The application also states that the expense of the overpass construction and projected traffic volumes did not justify construction of the roadway. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Board, are there any questions? Commissioner Kemp, you're recognized.
Yes, I have very serious questions about this proposal. I'll just say it now, and as we move forward, I've always been one to not want to vacate any opportunities, but particularly this one. Can you go back to that larger map? There we go, that one. So is, no, no, the other one that was truly showing the land there, the aerial. So here we have like one of the fastest growing, and I think we need another map here too to show Paseo Del Mar and how it comes across at the top and nineteenth at the bottom from east to west. If we could add that to this presentation, I think that that would be very important so that we understand the way that the South County grid works across. To me, we have nineteenth going east-west at the bottom and we have Paseo Del Mar. And then we have this big open area with literally no cross east and west between Apollo Beach and the coast or between forty-one, the railroad tracks and this. And the lack of a grid there is, I mean, I can't even believe that we would do that with the future growth intended. And even if somebody says, well, it doesn't, it's really not needed now. I mean, all we do is are bombarded by our lack of access and roadways and ways for people to get across South County, particularly east and west, but even north and south. So I would be very opposed to doing this and not leaving this as an opportunity for the future. It was included on the DRI because it was seated, seen as needed for the future, although all those things have gone away. And even with the cost of grade separation, which I guess now gets thrown to the county at some future time, I think it's extremely important that we make sure that this east-west connection happens sometime in the future. And I would never want to be in support of removing that opportunity. But if we could for the next presentation have a bigger map that shows the east-west corridors, I, I appreciate that.
Certainly.
Thank you.
Thank you for bringing that up, Commissioner Kemp. I have continually said it's fascinating. We have no east.
We have no east west roads anywhere in South County. And then it ends up causing a serious, you know, level of service problem on the ones that are there. So understanding why and how this is sort of evolving, it would be kind of really nice to know. But I hesitate also to remove any of our east west connections or at least planned east west connections, even though they have not yet been built. Commissioner Smith, you recognize?
So, thank you. And, you know, when I was first looking at this, I was thinking, well, that would be a crying shame. It was explained to me or, you know, to lose this other piece of the grid in this, especially in this area. It was explained to me that we have an agreement with CSX that we can only have one at grade crossing of the CSX tracks between, let's see, between Big Bend and 19th. And and so then I guess here I'm seeing it explained a little bit differently saying, well, if they were to get across it, it would have to be an overpass. And I hadn't realized that we have that possibility of having an overpass, but what would that entail? The either the developer or the and or the county paying for that overpass?
Sure. Currently, the developer commissioner is required to construct a two lane road, which would have to include an overpass at this point. If the county ever in the future wanted to wanted that to be four lanes, which the right of way is reserved for four lanes at this time, the county would be on the hook for the other two lanes across.
I see. I hadn't really, it hadn't been explained to me in the first seating discussion that an overpass was even a possibility. So that that does sort of change things. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Commissioner Kemp, you're recognized.
And I would just say that I think probably in the past, under concurrency and under the plans that we had in place, that would have been, I'm guessing mostly, at least partially paid for and required for water set for the development that they're doing and for the county. And now it's very convenient just to say, oh, let's, you know, we'll just put places there. We'll just forget about the grid. But I would think that this would be a serious loss on our part as a commission to move this forward. And so someday, yeah, it's probably going to rely on citizens or our taxpayers' dollars to figure out how to get across there, but we do have that opportunity.
Thank you.
All righty. Thank you very much. Thank you, Wade. I appreciate it. It was excellent presentation. The next item is HCCPA 2215 for our gopher tortoise habitat. So I'm looking forward to this one.
Okay, great. Hi, Commissioners. I am Sean College with Planning Commission Staff. And I will share my screen. I have a brief presentation for you. This is comprehensive plan amendment 22-15 regarding gopher tortoise habitat. In the interest of time, I won't go into too much detail on the background. Most of us are familiar with the importance of gopher tortoises to the ecology of Florida. They they build extensive burrows which provide shelter and habitat and protection for 350 other species, very important to the ecology of Florida. So what are we doing here? This is a publicly initiated plan amendment. It is pursuant to request of the Board of County Commissioners on June 6 and further clarified in July 26, directing county staff to address in the Land Development Code, protection of gopher tortoises and other listed species habitat and asking county staff to work with planning committee staff to look at the comprehensive plan for corresponding changes that may be necessary. So we did look at that, and this is working in parallel with county staff under land development code changes. We do find in the comprehensive plan, we just did a major update, there is extensive policy framework for listed species, significant wildlife habitats. So there's a great, great deal already there. Nonetheless, we did find an opportunity for some enhancements that will accompany the land development code changes that are a separate amendment. What we're proposing are three policy changes. The first one would lend support to the transfer of density when we're protecting significant and essential wildlife habitat, including gopher tortoise habitat. We also have a recognition of techniques such as clustering that can be used and are supported in the protection of such habitat. And finally, a recognition of for a changes in density and lot sizes being available upon approval to accompany protection and encourage the protection of gopher tortoises and other significant wildlife habitat. So these are some changes and enhancements that we're proposing. We have reached out, we coordinated this very well with county staff. We coordinated this with the Environmental Lands Program as well as the County Natural Resources Department. We've we've reached out to the state and to Sierra Club as well. So we're covering all the bases and we think we've got some enhancements here that can go along again with the existing very robust framework we already have in the complan. And will go well accompanying the land developments codes, which you'll see separately. I'm available for any questions you may have.
Thank you. I see Commissioner Smith. You have your hand raised. Come in, we are on mute, ma'am.
Could you go back to that last slide there?
Okay, just one second. I will do that for you.
And yeah, thank you very much. And I I do know, as you say, that the comprehensive plan has in several places, robust protections for, well, as robust as the state will allow us, protections for wildlife habitat and and stuff, but so are you showing that slide?
Well, I apologize. I have to I have to switch screens here.
And the impetus for these changes came about when we all became aware that developers, in the first place, Polte Homes was exposed as having really been just cruelly destructive in killing gopher tortoises illegally. And then, you know, when they get caught, if they'd get caught, they were simply paying a small fine and walking away. And and so we were trying to beef up our protections here as much as the state would allow us for, you know, gopher tortoises and gopher tortoise habitat. But of course, you know, now I'm glad to see that this language is for preserving gopher tortoise habitat and other uplands, significant and essential wildlife habitat. And I just want to, you know, make sure that that we are, you know, taking the opportunity to also be protecting things like burrowing owls, which are the cutest little things in that live in our county and are equally under threat as well as, you know, I understand, other species. So while the impetus for this came of us, you know, learning these this horrific destruction being done to gopher tortoises, are we now taking the opportunity to make sure that, you know, we are, we would be protecting habitat for burrowing owls or indigo snakes or anything under the these new policies? Or should we add other language to that to get that done at the same time?
Ma'am, in my opinion, I think what we've done here is cast a very broad framework of scope by exactly as you mentioned, talking about significant and essential wildlife habitats. It's very broad. These are the habitats that are getting protected in Hillsborough County. So I think this is a very broad policy framework, which allows the county, the the support to do the specifics in the code as the Board of County Commissioners deems appropriate.
Thank you. Just wanted to make sure. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you very much for your presentation. That was that was excellent. I don't see any other questions from the Commissioners. And so we will move on to the next item that is the CPA, HCCPA 2216B.
Good afternoon, Commissioners Melissa Dickens, Planning Commission Staff. I'll ask Diego Guerra to share his screen, please. Thank you. Again, Melissa Dickens, Planning Commission Staff. This is a publicly initiated amendment, HCCPA 2216B, the potable water wellfield protection area map amendment. Next slide, please. Some background on the map and potable water wellfield protection areas in Hillsborough County. These protection areas were originally developed back in the in the early aughts and adopted and incorporated into the comprehensive plan. The map within the comprehensive plan identifies a 500 foot radial setback from potable water wells that serve a certain number of year round potable users. In 2020, as part of the One Water Updates to the Comprehensive Plan, this map was moved as is, it was not modified, but it was moved and readopted into the new One Water Chapter. The One Water Chapter contains general provisions that relate to the protection of water resources, specifically groundwater resources, wellheads and wellfields. The details of how this is implemented and regulated by county staff is in the Land Development Code. And the definitions section for potable water wellfield protection areas provides the general purpose and intent of the regulation. It also identifies where the information can be found. And that that definition is consistent with with state definitions with the LDC definition as well. Next slide. And some background on this amendment specifically, this is again a publicly initiated amendment. It was initiated by Hillsborough County staff. This amendment proposes to remove this map from the comprehensive plan and edit the corresponding definition. It does not remove or alter the regulation, the regulatory intent, or the regulatory impact. The map, as you'll see on the following slides, is rather zoomed out in scale. These these wells, as we understand them, also change quite frequently. There are new maps or excuse me, new wells being added, wells being removed. And and the data changes quite frequently. So county staff indicates that continually to continuing to amend this map within the comprehensive plan can be ineffective. It it also is challenging to keep up with all of the wells as they're added. And FDEP maintains an electronic database that has all of the relevant wells and those 500 foot buffer areas. This is something where county staff or others can zoom in to particular properties and parcels and see exactly where the wells are and where the 500 foot buffers are. Next slide, please. So this proposed map, or excuse me, this proposed amendment would remove this map within the comprehensive plan. You can see kind of the the scale and general format of this map today. Next slide. And it also would modify the definition of potable water wellheads, wellfields to indicate that these are not shown on a map adapted as part of the comprehensive plan, but rather as maintained and updated by the Florida Department of Environmental Protection. Next slide. And this does conclude my formal presentation. I am available if there are any questions. County staff is also here if there are any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Dickens, for this presentation. Are there any questions for the board? Okay, and I'm just curious, did we run this by EPC staff thoroughly for getting any comment? I know there's oftentimes.
Yes, it has been provided to EPC staff. We provided it to all of the entities that regulate any kind of water resources in the county, so SWFMA, DEP, EPC. I don't believe we've gotten all our comments back yet, but but they have seen this.
Okay, no, and I appreciate that. I just know that we have, there's a reason we have an EPC versus going with Florida DEP. So I was just curious if we've gotten comments back from them yet. So thank you very much for your presentation. I appreciate it. I don't see any other questions. And so we can move on to the next item. Thank you.
Commissioner Overman, the the last item, HCCPA 2217, actually, that's the continued item.
Oh, that got continued. Okay, thank you very much. I did not catch that memo. It's still on my agenda. So. Okay, well, excellent. So we can adjourn this meeting and bring these items back for future consideration on October 13, 2022 at 6:00 PM.
Commissioner Overman.
Yes.
Number seven. I'm not, I know, I think I just missed the point. Is that being continued?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, it just got continued. And all the other items will be considered on October 13.
Okay, thank you.
All right. What's next, folks?
Mr. Madam Chair, our next item is our Land Development Code Amendment Workshop.
So I will close the agenda for the previous workshop and open call the meeting to order for the land use development changes, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Well, call the meeting to order. It is to order. I believe we still have everybody available. I don't know if we need to do roll call for the to opening of this particular comprehensive plan amendment.
Madam Chair, it'd be preferred if we could.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I'm not sure I see everyone. So let's let's go ahead and do a roll call for this meeting.
Overman.
Here.
Cullen.
Here.
Hagan. Commissioner Hagan. Kemp.
Here.
Myers.
Here.
Smith.
Here.
Wyatt.
Here.
Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you very much. And Mr. Gormley.
Yes, thank you, Commissioners. This workshop is done in advance of your September 29 Land Development Code Amendment Public Hearing. Mr. Israel Monsanto of Development Services Staff will run through the amendments. After Mr. Monsanto speaks to the first item, I will highlight some of the changes that were made in response to board direction at our June meeting regarding the land use meeting and resoning process. And with that, I'll ask Mr. Monsanto to begin the presentation.
Good afternoon. Israel Monsanto Development Services, can you hear me?
We can, and we can see your presentation as well. Thank you.
Excellent. Commissioners, this is the workshop and these items were presented already to the planning commissioners earlier this week. The next meeting that we have scaled is a public outreach meeting that will be next week, September 20. Then you will see again these items on the first public hearing as Mr. Gormley stated on September 29. Then we'll have a consistency finding by the planning commission on October 10, 10. And then lastly, we'll be back to you in the adoption date of October 20. Today, we will have, we will be presenting three items, 221113, Resoning and Land Use Meeting Procedures, 221115, A Full House in Development Standards Updates, and 221406, Gopher Tortoise Habitat. First item, 221113, the purpose of this amendment is to modify the resoning and land use meeting procedures, including providing for a more expansive record of for board consideration and for revised duties and responsibilities for the land use hearing officer. It will maintain the zoning hearing master process with established criteria for consent agenda items and provide that the board would hear applications not meeting the criteria for the consent agenda. We'll also provide for open period between the zoning hearing, master hearing and the board consideration whereby the record may be supplemented through the submission of additional written or documentary materials. And other changes will also include the role and qualification of the land use hearing officer as well as the timing of open record period. And we are available if you have any questions. And we are available if you have any questions.
And Commissioners, I'll just add to this that this amendment is the product of several discussions that we've had with the board. First, a workshop last June. We got some thoughts from the board, as well as a presentation in June, where the board gave some comments on draft language and gave some specific direction. And these amendments are reflective of the changes that were directed by the board, as well as some changes that were suggested based on stakeholder input. At the June 7th meeting, there was several issues that the board had asked us to look at further. One of them was to make sure that all the language included in the amendment was gender neutral, which has been done. There was a couple gender references in there that have been removed. The board also had had some discussion about whether to characterize the land use hearing officers, what the land use hearing officer produced as what was originally presented as written advice. There was some discussion about whether that should be a summary or whether a recommendation was something that should be included. And Mr. Monsanto, I think your screen is showing still up there. Thank you. Thank you. So what we've done, and I think what I took is the overriding issue that the board was trying to address was wanting to make sure that the LUHO recommendation was, the product was not given any heightened significance or would not be perceived to somehow be binding on the board. And so what I've done is taken those comments and what I'm suggesting with this draft is that the, we have the land use hearing officer produce a written report. And that report would have findings of fact, leaving out conclusions of law, which is in there currently, and have a recommendation to the board on either approving or denying the application. Also added language, and I'll ask if Mr. Monsanto can put it up on the screen, in section 10.03.03 subsection F, added some language that reads as follows. "It is the express intent of the Board of County Commissioners that the land use hearing officer report and the findings of fact and recommendations contained therein shall only constitute a portion of the record for each application and shall not bind or otherwise compel any particular decision or action by the Board of County Commissioners. The Board of County Commissioners is the sole authority for final decisions regarding the approval or denial of applications filed pursuant to this part." So that was the intent, that was my attempt to take the comments that the board offered and still have something that would come from the land use hearing officer that would have a structure to it. The language calls for the land use hearing officer to provide a summary of the county staff report, summary of the Planning Commission report, and a summary of the hearings. It then has the LUHO making findings of fact and a recommendation. Again, I've added that language at the bottom that's on the screen now to clarify, which I think is the case right now, but I understand that somehow sometimes that gets presented differently in our current code structure has the land use, the Board of County Commissioners perhaps being responsive to the recommendation as opposed to the recommendation being a tool for the board's consideration. That was one change and one item that was, it is different from your draft you saw in June. And just for informational purposes, the blue text on there is new since your June version. The red text is what was presented in June. The other two, a couple other items that the board had asked to look at was clarification on the time that a land use hearing officer, once they left, serving as a land use hearing officer, could come back and do business in front of the county. The board had asked at that timeframe be increased to two years from one year, but exclude the firm, or firm that that land use hearing officer may be associated with. That change has been made and is in your backup. The other item that was of discussion in June was the length of time. So what we're proposing now is a, after the zoning hearing master, sorry, after the land use hearing officer hearing closes, an open records period in which interested persons could submit additional documentary evidence. We had that in the June draft, and we still have that in there. What was of discussion was what was the point of cutoff for submission of that documentary information? And so I took the board's comments, and there were several comments made about the benefit that is perceived from having briefings where we're able to present the information that will be relevant at the hearing, what's been submitted into the record. And so what we're recommending now is that that cutoff be seven business days before the land use hearing officer hearing. I'm sorry, before the, excuse me, BOCC land use meeting. And what that effectively will mean is for a typical Tuesday land use meeting, that cutoff will be the, a week before the preceding Friday. And the reason we're recommending that timeframe is the week before the land use meeting is when we typically start our briefings. And we do a lot of briefings on Thursday and Friday, but sometimes those briefings will occur on a Wednesday and occasionally even a Tuesday. We were recommending that that preceding Friday be the cutoff because that will give us time to take in any documents that are submitted, include them in the backup that gets distributed to the board, and be able to review any new materials submitted in advance of the briefings and be able to advise the board of any changes that may have occurred based on that information or what issues may be raised at the land use meeting. There are a couple other changes that were suggested at our stakeholder outreach meeting. And I think the ones I think are merit worthy have been included in this draft. One suggestion was to increase the experience required for a land use hearing officer from three to seven years. And there was some discussion about whether, you know, the amount of time that that should be. It was felt, and I agree with the sentiment, that say, a third-year lawyer or a third-year planner may still, there may be some seasoning that would be beneficial before serving in this role. And I can tell you that in my time at the county, we've never had a land use hearing officer that has had, you know, less than seven years' experience to serve in that role. So that's a change that we're recommending. Another suggestion, I thought this was a really helpful suggestion, a really good suggestion, was that in the notice letters, the requirement for notice, that there be a, some information included in there on how to participate at the hearing, and both on, you know, showing up and testifying, but also some of the logistical things that we are working with now, particularly with virtual participation. Things like if you're gonna submit information, it needs to be in the record, and it can't be simply shown on a phone. If you're gonna testify remotely, that you need to have video and audio capabilities. So those type of things that are on our website now, but we believe that may, would be beneficial to also include in the notices that are sent. The last change, well, really, it's two changes, is dealing with the order of presentation and the time for presentation. The way the code is currently structured, we have the applicant go first with their presentation and then have staff, both county staff and Planning Commission staff, presenting their, the summary of their findings. What happens in a lot of instances is that that ends up being a kind of a repeat of the presentation. And so what we're recommending is that county staff, the order of presentation of county staff make the presentation first, then the Planning Commission, and then the applicant. So the staffs can frame the application, and the applicant can speak to what they, you know, feel is relevant without necessarily having to set the table or go over what the base, you know, the basics of the application. The county staff might come back later and recover. The other change that was suggesting is in the time for presentation at the land use meeting. Currently, at the zoning hearing master, there is 15 minutes allowed for applicant, 15 for opponents, and 15 for proponents. What the structure of this being recommended here is that, is that once this, once this gets to the board, we're not just limited to the record, and there may be additional testimony and things that are discussed. So recommending making those two presentation timeframes consistent so that at the land use meeting, there would be a 15-minute time maximum allowed for applicant presentation, 15 for the applicant, I'm sorry, for supporters, and 15 for opposition, where it is listed as 10 minutes today. So we thought, with the opening up of the testimony that it was worth considering having that time also expanded for the presentation since it's a bit more expansive than what the code contemplates now.
Adam, can I ask you a quick question? Thank you. I'm seeing that my meeting agenda process is gonna completely need to be rewritten if this is adopted. But so, so we will hear from the, you know, Development Services and then the Planning Commission, and then the applicant, and then the proponents and opponents, and then rebuttal by the applicant?
Yes, yes, ma'am.
Okay, that makes sense. And the notification, the information that goes out, you know, we have a cutoff for changes approximately seven days before the land use meeting, if I'm understanding you correctly. So it's about a week. When does the notification of the meeting with the information about the cutoff date go to the public?
So what we're recommending is seven business days. And so it worked out to about 10 days or so before the hearing. It's the Friday, the week before the meeting. Meetings on Tuesday, a week before that preceding Friday.
Okay, and then, but when's the advertisement of the actual hearing with any details that are, that have already been captured by the hearing master?
So the notice for the board land use meeting is sent by the clerk's office, and that's sent to all parties of record. And that notice is required to be sent 20 days prior to the board's consideration. So that notice goes out today. We, if this is approved, we'll work with the clerk to modify, you know, the details of those notices as appropriate.
So 10 days before we stop taking new information and 10 days prior to that, we've notified the public that they are to provide us with any potential changes and participation? Is that correct?
So we would, there's a few ways that we would share this information. One is continue to do what we do now and provide this information at the zoning hearing master. Also, just from a, just a matter of business matter, of course, we would update our information on our website on participation and note that that new opportunity for, assuming this gets approved, that new opportunity for post-LUHO documentation and the change in the limitation on testimony at the zoning hearing master hearing. We do have a page where we were compiling zoning-related information. So we would use whatever, you know, whatever tools we have to disseminate those, that message. We would have the opportunity in the mailed notice for the ZHM to also describe what would happen at the land use hearing officer, I'm sorry, at the land use meeting. So for those that get that initial notice, that would be included in that. So we're not contemplating that we would make people aware of that opportunity only at that last, at that last notice opportunity, but try to get that, not try, we'll get that information out earlier and throughout the process. And we do that now with our, with our zoning hearing master hearings and information about, provide information about the limitations that are currently in place now. So that all would be modified if this were approved.
Okay, great, thank you very much. I don't see any other questions from other Commissioners. So with that, we can move on to the next element, or update, rather.
Mr. Monsanto?
Yes, the next item. Item LDC 221115, Affordable Housing Development Update. The purpose is to revise and add development standards to implement affordable housing density bonus policy proposed for the updated housing section by the Comprehensive Plan Text Amendment, HCCPA 22-08. Requirement of the bonus usage, including affordability term, density setbacks, and income requirements will be included. The uses of this regulation, if adopted, only applies to those properties within the organ service boundary. Section 61107 of the Land Development Code provides the standards to implement the affordable housing density bonus, and this text amendment will update that section of the code to reflect changes in the Comprehensive Plan. Provisions to affordable housing definitions found in the Land Development Code will also be included in this text amendment. And Staff Isabel, if you have any questions.
I actually just have a couple of comments that I'd need to get some clarity on. I've perused through the document. I obviously need to read a lot more through it because there's been some nice changes to it. And we've been addressing the multiplier effect on the density calculations along the way, so I need to get some clarity there. But I did have an outstanding question as it pertains to this particular piece because there is a difference in the monitoring responsibilities, you know, on whether or not we're dealing with an affordable housing unit that could move to, you know, market rate development at some point in time. So for example, looking at how the language would be different when it's a property that is still for homeownership versus a property that's developed for homeownership that could potentially turn to rental or for rental, whether it be single-family and whether it's multifamily. And the reason, because it does list both, you know, single-family residential, and then I'll see different versions of multifamily in the descriptions. But when you're managing affordable housing, and we're increasing density, and the state statute now says a 50-year perpetuity for rental, but there isn't, it's sort of silent on the issue for homeownership? Is the administration's requirement of monitoring single-family homeownership for affordability when there is two different levels of subsidy? There's the financial subsidy that we have, where there's a covenant on the land or deed restrictive to assure that the affordability meets or can be... or deed restrictive to assure that the affordability meets or can be met and is being met in terms of the term. Um, and then secondarily, there's the land use subsidy, which is the entitlement as far as the getting the density, because that doesn't go away. You, once you give the density there, it's always there, right? But it's, but it's technically is the land use subsidy. So I'm, I'm, I was not able to get all the way through the, the document to really see how we had addressed those issues in the design of the density and what's permitted. Or whether or not it actually addresses the differences. Yeah, when we have a community land trust and we give the density, that's for perpetuity, just because the community land trust oversees it. But when it's a fee simple homeownership situation, it's a little different. So I'm, I just need to go back through the document and see if we've actually provided for the differences in those terms. And, and the requirement for affordability when, you know, the H F A or, or, our financing arm is moving more towards permanent affordability for multifamily. And then they're also opening up the door for down payment assistance for single family. So I think we're going to need to make sure that we recognize there's, other than the land use, because this actually creates a land use term. I mean, a land use qualification and the density bonus is actually permanent. Land use subsidy, we, we need to make sure that we've addressed those outstanding issues when it comes to monitoring the affordability. Cause I have heard, um, of what we're trying to do is avoid having someone purchase it and then flip it a year later and it doesn't stay affordable. You know, there are certain terms in there, but, but if it's actually in the, um, in the deed restriction or in the covenant, it means we do have to monitor it. And that's, or, or that has to be, we have to determine a way that we can. So that was, that was why I wanted to, to see if there's somewhere in that, that that's taken into consideration.
So Commissioner, that, what you raise is, is a very, very good question, good point and something that we have for, for some time had to struggle with how to, how to accomplish this in, in all scenarios. But the, so this, this, uh, language is, is partnering and pairing with the updates to the housing element that should be considering. And that's why, you know, you see some of the similar, um, provisions in here. What is, what is being, in, in currently in place and what proposed is that there be adequate assurances that the housing will, will remain affordable housing over a period of, and it currently says 15. It's being proposed to change to 30 years. So we, we have a, we have a, a, a sort of a, a check before any land use subsidies are provided, be it uh, density bonus or reduced lot sizes and, 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 and develop, and development types. Flexibility that, that, whatever the, the mechanism will need, there, there will need to be something in place that we're confident that, that can be servant as, as an assurance that the affordability will, will remain in place. So it's in there with, in concept, the nuts and bolts of how that's, that's accomplished is, is still a ongoing discussion on things such as single family homes. Um, because your point is exactly right, is, is, you know, it needs to be monitored. And, and frankly, that, that our current land use, um, enforcement tool, which is a, you know, code enforcement citation, going to code enforcement board. And it, it's not, it's not really.
It's not set for monitoring. Right. Yeah. It's, it's, it's more set up to be reactive. But, but I also did want to double check that it's my understanding, and we can double check with, uh, Florida Housing Coalition. Cause that's been my, you know, there, that's my library. To help, to help me study on this. They've, they've been pretty good. But it's my understanding that the deed restrictions at li- uh, for, at the state level has been extended from 30 years to 50. So I think we need to take a look at that in the event that that extension has occurred and that we would need in order to be in, in, you know, in concert or in compliance with the state that the 50 may, may need to be considered in this land use text amendment, since we reference it from 15 to 30. The state was at 30 and now it's at 50. So I, I think it's important to take a look at that.
Commissioner Overman, if I may, this is Jake Collins with the planning commission. Again, just to reiterate what Mr. Gormley is saying, that this is a set process that the county has been working through for a number of years. So we're working within something that is known policy in updating within it. But you are correct that if the state moves the goalposts one way or the other, then obviously we need to be consistent with what the state is putting forward, which is something that we can most certainly look at. Again, this is a bonus tool. So this is something that is above and beyond what is considered baseline. So you see a lot of that in comprehensive planning and zoning for what happens when you actually put a bonus on something. It allows for some flexibility in that term for how you do the enforcement.
Understood. I know, I understand that. So, uh, I'll get a little more detail to make sure that, um, we've set up some time possibly with, um, Ms. Ross, just to get clarification so that we're in compliance, but it, it looks like we're going in the right direction. But this entire issue is really a bonus in it and tied to the affordable housing strategies associated with the state statute too. So that's why I started looking at it, but, and there is really a significant difference in the subsidy options, whether it's a land use subsidy, which is a permanent density bonus that's applied and, and offered as part of making the deal work. And the, or the financial subsidy, which is, you know, whole different, that whole situation is a much more fluid. But the, the land use subsidy by offering the additional density, which is basically what it is. You know, that's a permanent subsidy. It, you don't suddenly get less density, once, once the buildings are built. So, and whether it's rental or, or homeownership, that does matter. So, um, I, I just need to make sure that when we bring it back in, in, in October.
September 29th will be our first.
September 29th. Yeah. Well, that's not very far away. So we, we'll, we'll, I'll make sure those comments get back to.
And we do have two public hearings, so there's some time between the first and the second. And Chair Overman, if one, one thing I could raise here, um, our, our, our current structure and, and proposed to be still the remaining structure is allows for standard zoning districts, some flexibility for affordable housing developments in lot sizes and housing types. So it, it allows, um, in, uh, consideration of single family attached duplex, triplex, quadplex, townhomes. Are really multifamily units in standard zoning districts. We have run across a situation just in the past, uh, you know, week or so of a, of a affordable housing project that has a planned development zoning. And due to some, some, some changes in their, in their, uh, design and planning, they're needing to change their unit types from single family and duplexes to, uh, triplexes and, and townhomes. Under our current, I believe you're familiar.
Yeah, I am. Quite. That's why it's all got my attention. I was like, wait, what?
Uh, under our current structure, our only answer for that, that affordable housing developer and that P D is you've got to go through the modification process to change those unit types.
Right.
I, I, I think that since we are, allow the flexibility in unit types in standard zoning districts. What, what I'd like to bring is, is some ability to provide that same flexibility in planned development zonings for an affordable housing development and something meeting that 20% uh, affordable units and allow, uh, flexibility to, to consider going from single and duplexes to tw- to triplex and, or townhomes and doing that as an administrative change so that those, those changes could be done, um, quickly. I wouldn't, not, not recommending that we would, we would include, uh, multifamily apartments in that because that, that could get to a different kind of development type. But this one particular project and seeing the challenges that our current process posed to it. I, I think we have an opportunity there here to, to, um, provide an easier path for those, again, that are confirmed affordable housing developments, which this, this one is. So.
I think that becomes really important. A lot of these, a lot, any type of affordable housing, um, capital stack has timelines and serious considerations when our process extends the timeline. And, and has, you know, adverse effects on not only, um, the homeowners or future homeowners, but also the developers and, and, you know, uh, ultimately the price. So I, I, if we could allow for the language to be flexible enough, but stay within the parameters. I, I think that I would not be opposed to that. I don't know about the rest of the board, but any way that we could stay within the parameters of what meets not only the comp plan, but also the land use and have that sync up. I think we'd be, would be acceptable in my opinion. So.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other questions for the board? Okay. And we have.
I have just.
Mr. Kemp, go ahead.
And I'm not sure about what places this all belongs in, but, um, just to be clear, so if somebody gets, um, you know, 10 acres is res one. Well, that's not a good example. 10 acres as let's say res two. They don't, they must be separated units or let's say res four. They must be separated units by virtue of being res four. They couldn't, for instance, be four townhouses.
Commissioner, so a res four comprehensive plan designation wouldn't, wouldn't necessarily preclude the consideration of, 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 uh, townhome type development. What, the situation that I was speaking to was, it was a, was a planned development that had already been approved. And it, and it wasn't a matter of they couldn't, the, the change couldn't be made or, or that, you know, would be in, you know, a, a change that would cause concern. The, the issue is, is the process by which that, that change would, would come. So in, in this case, the, the initial, um, applicant for the P D had, had, had a particular product type in mind, and that was what was requested in, in the zoning. That, that product type changed. So what I'm suggesting is in those scenarios, you know, we like, it, it's nice for, for flexibility to be built in upfront in P D's. Sometimes that will occur and sometimes it won't, but you know, in those events where it won't, or we have existing situations that might benefit from that. I think there's an opportunity to, to, to put a little less process and time.
Yeah, there's some flexibilities I approve of, and this would be one of them. There's some that, uh, I, I, I would necessarily, um, do that. But, um, but usually in this context I would, but the, and the, the other thing is just, uh, you know, I'm always concerned about the terms affordable workplace or workforce. I, I can't even, some of the others, but that supposedly have a designation of a percentage of A M I associated with it. And rather than have the term affordable workforce or whatever, I'd really clearly like to have the designation, as you know, I really, um, I, I'm really with the 80% or below. As a, of A M I, um, since we have, you know, that's where a true crisis is. And, and it becomes, you know, as we move up, uh, less, but I'm just wondering, rather than use the term affordable, use the term 80% and below or, you know, um, whatever, as, you know, have it clearly stated. Because I think otherwise we just get into, I mean, every single time it's like, wait, what is this? You know, so I'm, I'm asking with regards to that.
So, so Commissioner, what we have defined in here is, is affordable housing that it is set at the 120% A M I level. And this is to, to, in, to match up with what's in the housing element. Of course, if that changes in the plan, then we would reflect a change in the code language as well. But the, the, the breakdown of, um, 60, 80, or 1, 120, um, comes in with the, uh, with, with the density bonus units. And I think, uh, Mr. Collins explained that well to you at, at the, at the housing, uh, element, um, update that, that the first cut i- is the 60%. So it starts at the lowest percentage and moves, um, upwards. So we, 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 the way the code is structured and is that that, that is what's defined as affordable housing is that 120 and below. But within that, then, then when we get into the density bonuses, that's where the 60, 80 and 120 get, get broken out in terms of how many, what percentage of the units needs to meet each of those thresholds.
I guess when it comes back, I'll have my issues with that in terms of the, um, specificity in the code because, yeah. Cause I just can't support the 120%. I just, it, it, it doesn't seem like a, a reasonable, um, but you know, it's, it's basically we're, we're trading off for this and I think we should just have it meet, um, some of these requirements that, uh, seem to be that, that, that they can be met from what I can, can tell. So that, I'll just express that now.
Thank you.
Um, Mr. I'm not going to say it right. Avaro.
All right. Uh, hi commissioners. My name is Oliver Ogobalden from, uh, planning commission, uh, planning Hillsborough staff. I, I just wanted to, uh, address a little bit of the language around the word affordable, because sometimes it's used just plainly used as a sita, as a, uh, sorry, an adjective. And sometimes it is referring to, say, something that is being defined by the code or the comp plan. And I just wanted to provide, hopefully it's not more confusion and it's just a clarifying perspective. But when you look at the way HUD, uh, looks at income and housing cost, essentially the perspective is that a household that, that is having to pay more than 30% of their income, uh, uh, spending more than 30% of their income on housing costs is cow, is cost burdened. So, uh, when you take that perspective at, uh, any of these A M I levels, somebody, a household can be cost burdened. So, uh, if you make up more than 100% of the A M I of Hillsborough County, it's just as likely for you to be spending more than 30% of your income on housing. And according to HUD, you would be cost burdened. So, um, it's a sliding kind of definition, but it's because, you know, uh, uh, incomes are on a spectrum. So if, uh, it's hard to kind of switch, switch, uh, perspectives across all these numbers because they describe different, um, variations. But again, HUD considers, uh, households spending more than 30% of their income as cost burden. So, uh, at any A M I level that, that, uh, applies.
Avaro, thank you very much. That was very helpful. And, uh, Commissioner Smith, you?
Yes, um, it, I mean, the trouble with defining, I agree that, um, there's some confusion around affordable and attainable and workforce housing. And there's a lot of people having trouble affording housing these days. But the trouble with getting into 30% of your income is you could, I mean theoretically be making a very high income and, um, deciding to spend over 30% of it on, uh, housing. Some luxury housing and then you would be by definition cost burden. Whereas talking about the average median income of people in Hillsborough County and, and aiming and targeting the people who are making less than the average is a, um, is a stronger place to be, I think, than, than trying to help, uh, conceivably, um, people, um, they, with higher. with higher than average incomes to afford higher than average housing, while we have people below average, making below the average wage, really struggling to to stay housed at all. You know, they don't have options. So I think that's a clearer, cleaner, specific. And of course, as you know, everybody knows, I feel strongly that we should be, I I've said it multiple times, that I agree with Commissioner Kemp's position she just stated, that we should be helping those at fifty and eighty percent AMI as the priority before we start you know, helping people who are making above average. If you're above average, you're doing better than the people below average. And those are the those are the people we need to to help. Thank you.
Thank you. And I I don't disagree with either of you. However, the good news is is that the 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 brackets for how much go into certain average median income categories for the density that's offered when the project is built determines the rental rates available to those that fit within those categories for the AMIs at the time and later what the rental rates could move to based on HUD's adjustments and calculation based on our average median income in Hillsborough County. The challenge we have is that one is a moving target. And then two, if we only end up with single family, you know, I mean, single one bedroom apartments, you know, at eighty percent or thirty percent or sixty percent AMI, we don't have any inventory for households that have more than one child or or have or larger families where they may have a higher AMI, but they also have three or four children. And there is no product built for them. Or we have areas that require, when we have no transit service, for people to come long distances where the cost of transportation is not calculated in part of the equation, but they're still inside the urban service area. So when you when you take ten thousand dollars off the top of their income, they may actually be at, you know, eighty percent AMI. But you know, they but because there it's more than, you know, when you calculate out based on what HUD describes, you end up with a situation where their rent and their transportation cost exceeds even affordability at all. And so they leave Hillsborough County, bottom line. But the other element associated with this, and I've actually asked for the data, is to say if we if we if we look at any housing densities, which is a land use subsidy, and limit our affordable housing investments by the financial subsidy eligibility too. And we only go to a hundred percent AMI and don't consider those that are house burdened, that are in the one twenty range for the rents, that they be eligible for receiving a financial subsidy or not. You know, they may be in that category, but they're eligible to live there, but there's no financial subsidy. But there's rents available for that income range that doesn't require a financial subsidy, but the density is already there because we built it. There there is an opportunity to to look at how many of those deals get done. And that was my concern by limiting it at a hundred and with the and not with, I don't want to take away the median income at eighty percent, but but by limiting it at a hundred percent AMI for any of the, whether it be land use subsidy or financial subsidy, any of the tools that we use to encourage the development of affordable housing. If we cut it off at a hundred percent and we don't get any deals done, we haven't helped the people at thirty percent or sixty percent or eighty percent, because there's no housing being built. We have over three thousand residents in Hillsborough County that are running around with housing vouchers right now that they cannot find a place to use them. Because there is no affordable housing available for those rental rates that are available, irrespective of where our average median income is. So I think we have to be just have enough flexibility to say if I still serve eighty percent based on the margins that are within these, where a certain amount goes to sixty percent, certain amount goes to eighty percent or below, that gives us the ability to get more affordable housing built because of the combination of financial subsidy and land use subsidy, and the land use is permanent in terms of the subsidy. But the permanency to require it being the the rental rates forever be within those AMI ranges where it's not thirty percent, you know, you're not paying more than thirty percent of your income. If that becomes perpetuity, which it could under a community land trust, or it could under the deed restriction, that still preserves housing for for people that we don't have now. So I just want to make sure whatever our formula looks like is, you know, it doesn't prohibit us from having affordable housing developed in Hillsborough County, because the the metrics just don't work. And that's what I've asked the Housing Coalition to assist us in kind of looking at. And I'll try and get us an answer between now and we move forward on this. Commissioner Kemp.
I'll I'll just be really brief, but I think the, you know, we'll have to look over the numbers, the percentage under a hundred and twenty percent or whatever it was. Prior was pretty de minimis. And the the problem too with doing those kinds of subsidies is first of all, it's only done in this density context. It's not as if other affordable housing isn't built. But I think what you're doing is subsidizing others to charge higher rents when you do that. And that you're you're exacerbating the problem actually, rather than addressing it better. But that's 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 where I am with it. And so I'll I'll let it go with that. But I guess we can see the charts when they come.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Thank you very much for that presentation. And the last one is actually the gopher tortoise's habitat. I know, Commissioner Cohen, you've got to go. I I'm about ready.
Commissioner Overman, I I apologize, but I do have a hard stop at three thirty. I I told you that earlier, so I'm gonna have to exit.
Okay, thank you. This is our last item on the gopher tortoise habitat.
Right. Israel National Science Development Services. Yes, this is our last item, LDC twenty two dash fourteen oh six, Gopher Tortoise Habitat. The purpose of this amendment is to require applicants for development of land that includes gopher tortoise habitat to provide a gopher tortoise bird survey prepared by Florida Fish Wildlife Conservation Commission, authorized agent, and to report any previous violations of gopher tortoise regulations in the state of Florida. It would also provide for consideration of a smaller lot size requirement for development that preserve on-site significant wildlife habitat beyond the minimum required by the code. It will also increase penalties for unpermitted land alteration to significant wildlife habitat. Changes will include modifications to Part four oh one, natural resources, five oh three, changes to PDs, six oh one, district performance and dimensional standards, and Part eleven oh six enforcement. This amendment is related to CBA twenty two fifteen of the Comprehensive Plan, and this concludes my presentation.
Well, that was very quick, Michelle. Thank you very much. Well, we heard earlier the comp plan and and this, are there any questions? And you've got the comments from the comp plan suggestions. So would they need to be incorporated in this particular land text amendment as well?
So Commissioner, we we do in here provide the incentive. We started off talking about gopher tortoise habitat, but in terms of the incentives, it is expansive to include any any significant wildlife habitat. So that 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 piece is is incorporated in into this amendment.
Excellent. Commissioner Smith.
Just want to say thank you. It's clear there was a lot of work put into this and and a lot of consideration of the board's concerns, and I think it's very well done doing as much as we can do. And while I'm at it, ditto for the first item on our agenda about the land use hearing officers and the zoning process. So thank you. I didn't say that before, but you can see there's been a lot of work done by staff on these amendments incorporating all our discussion, which has been really complex on these on these issues. And I appreciate the work. I'm very excited about all of it.
Same here, same here. Commissioner Kemp, you're recognized.
I'll say the same as well. It's been amazing work, and I can't even believe how thorough and detailed, especially when responding to the whole Hearing Master situation, but with with the work that's been done. I'm just very, very, very appreciative of all everything that's been done.
Great job, King. Definitely job. I I I will say I did go to the affordable statewide Affordable Housing Conference recently. And every one I spoke with from all around the state have been quite impressed with much of the work that we've been doing. So and obviously, we can't get it done without the wonderful staff we have that keeps doing the work and on bringing it back for our consideration. And I can't thank you enough for all this hard work. Our next, our meeting on these particular items is on September twenty ninth at six P M, where we will be conducting the public hearing on these amendments. Excellent. Not seeing any other questions. And that's all of our agenda. I will call the meeting adjourned. Thank you so very much.
Thank you.